19 pandemic in pursuit to addendum six to executive order zero one dash two zero and act ninety-two, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. In accordance with act ninety-two, there's no physical location to observe the in listen contempt for listening as late to this meeting. However, in accordance with the temporary amendments to the open leading meeting law, I confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by zoom, electronic means and an access offered through computer telephone and iPhone, correct?
Um, yep.
We're using zoom for this remote remote meeting. All the members of the board have ability to communicate. That were contemporary.
Contemporaneously.
Contemporaneously, okay, thank you. During this meeting through the platform during in the public has access contemporaneously listening and if desired, participate in the meeting by. How do they they could just. A man when during the.
When you give an opportunity for people to speak.
Okay, well. To add comment. Provided public notice of instructions for accessing the minutes. We previously we gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access this meeting using the electronic and meeting agenda. Instructions posted on the town website. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please. What do we?
To email the select board email address.
Okay, so send you an email, okay? Providing a mechanic, continuing the meeting area in public and able to access this meeting. It will be continued to a time and place or please note that all votes taken during this meeting that are not unanimous will be done by roll call vote in accordance with the law. Let's start. Meeting by attendance of all members participating in this meeting.
I'm getting some awful feedbackers. Are you getting that?
Yeah, I am too. That's why if you can click mute while you're not speaking.
But is it a television or something?
That was a lot better.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Is everything all right now or?
That's a lot better.
So still getting feedback on my end.
How about now?
I can hear you fine right now.
Okay.
We're good?
I think so.
How do you mute it?
Um, there should be. If you go click on your own face.
Yeah.
There should be a little button that says mute.
The switch to camera, switch to active speak.
Well, you'll be speaking quite a bit, Mike, so I think that you're probably okay.
All right. Trying to make noise wasn't from me.
No, no. Went away from whatever Kristen did, it's very clear now.
Okay. So we'll start with taking a roll call attendance, please, Kristen.
Okay, so I have Frank Nelson is here, Ed Cleveland, Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Julie Mack, Chuck Whedon and Ed Cleveland. Does anybody else want to identify themselves?
I didn't hear my name.
Bob Jones, thank you.
Can you hear me? This is Frank.
Oh, hi Frank, we can hear you great, thank you.
Uh, I recommend that. Click on the participants button at the bottom and.
Uh, he's got a problem.
He's yeah, he's like, I can't hear a word he says.
Oh, sorry Frank, we're having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
You're broken up, but yes.
If you merge the participants with the screen, you you can see a lot more on who's new than who's not.
Okay, thank you.
There's still echo.
Yeah, I he he's all broke up.
Okay. Shall we continue ahead with approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes of the last meeting.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed, carried. Preview appearances?
No pre requested. Bob Marleano had mentioned that he was going to be on to discuss his continuity of operations plan, et cetera, but I have not seen him. I know there's a fire department meeting tonight as well. So but maybe he'll be on by the time we get to his reports.
Okay.
And I have no announcements that came through my way.
Okay.
Bob Marleano sent me a text in regards to everything that he probably was gonna say in his behalf were available. So I think we all have text messages from him.
Okay.
Yeah, he sent us a message earlier this week with the upgraded policies, both of them. The regular policy and the. I don't even remember the abbreviation for the other one, some kind of catastrophic event first, continuous operations.
So, yeah. And health issue that he had, there was apparently a dog bite.
Yeah, I've got I have a report from the health officer and the emergency management director for when we get there.
Was there a zoning administrator's report?
No reports submitted for this meeting.
Okay. Planning commission probably is not because they haven't had a meeting.
Right.
And Keith, I did send him a text and asked him if he were gonna participate in the meeting, but he didn't answer.
Okay.
That's a shame, cuz I've got a list of things I wanted.
Yeah, well, we can we can get it to him one way or another.
But we should we should discuss it right now then Chuck, and then we can and get him to him. So if you don't mind sharing that with us.
Okay, um, I'll start off with my concern on the roll off container is still in the highway rear yard, has not been sent anywhere. It needs to be gone, especially now with this virus floating around. We don't need to be. You know, I mean, we talked about this at a number of meetings, oh, and it's still in the highway backyard. Needs to be held at no matter what the expense, it needs to be gone.
Okay, I did say, oh, excuse me.
The the TVs are on the outside of that. I do understand that if those TVs were put in that black Dodge dump, that the operator could take them to a location in Rutland and get rid of them. Uh, they can't go in the roll off because they're being hazardous. Also, still don't see the James Glick sign by the side of the library states no parking so that he can get back to his right of way. And then, um, the next to the last item. Back when Tim was with us, we had a regular, um, session from stating what their plan of attack was on the two weeks so that we know about what their plan of attack is gonna be, especially now when I'm thinking our budget is probably gonna have to be looked at because I'm not sure how the taxes are gonna come across. That's that's another, that's down the road. But the, um, we still own a junk chipper. We own chainsaws. There's numerous dead trees by the roads edges of our some of our highways that should be addressed before they take power lines down or end up on somebody's car or, you know, the program. And I also heard that we had an idea that she could just sign the checks and send them off. I don't believe that that can be done. I still think it needs a second signature on all checks that are being sent off, whether it be payroll or bills. I still think they need the two signatures. And that ends my part of my. I'd like to have Keith get my comments in some manner. Uh, I'm I'm not, I'm not being irate, but I am. I'm I'm saying that that roll off needs to be gone. I don't care what the amount of money is, but it needs to be out of there. I think the board will back me on that.
Um, may I add something quick, Frank? In regards to this, just sent in a comment saying that in Rutland on route four behind the school near the Home Depot, they take electronic waste. We might need to check and see if they're still doing it, but we can also advise citizens to take their take their waste there, but that might be a good alternative.
They take that stuff, it's on Gleason Road.
Okay, so we that might be something that we can.
Probably now call them beforehand. I would just like, you know how I feel about that dumpster. If that dumpster was, in my opinion, if that dumpster was sitting in someone's yard in town, we would have had the health officer asking him right now because that's, I believe, has gotten to be a real health issue. There's got to be tracks and things attracted there cuz it's been, well, way more than a year and it's been longer than that that it's been sitting there. That needs to be, I asked him a year ago and it, I'm sorry, it needs to be done. It needs to be taken care of. One way or another.
Does the dumpster belong to, is there a name on it?
Well, we've done through that before, we've been trying to find, you know, we were gonna check with a couple different businesses to see if they could dump it.
Last last summer, I was gonna contact Clarence Ritchie and and I failed to do that. So I'll try and contact him again to see if he can just get it out of there. We we don't want it, do we?
Well, in one way, it would be handy to have it, now just not in such a public location. It would be handy to have for like Greenup Day in just our own town highway, what I think, but I'm, you know, I don't know.
I'm afraid that having it would would open open up too much opportunity.
Well, that could be, you know, and it may be better to just.
Yeah, wrap one as needed.
Yeah, I don't I don't care whoever takes it ends up with it.
There's also liability issue because private people are just coming in dumping your stuff on.
Right. So it needs to go away.
It needs to, yeah. If nothing else, the place, it's disgusting to drive by and see it sitting there. Take a little pride in, you know, in your building, in the ground.
Okay, let me, I'll make a point to talk to Clarence this week and see if he would come and get, I I'm not sure, but I'll talk to him about it. Um, the TVs, they'll have to go to Rutland, the right of way sign. Kristen, can you send Keith an email or something with with all these questions on it?
Also, um, has the recording time been changed in the morning or is it the same as it was for the road crew?
I don't know if they've gone on time hours yet or not.
Okay, I just wondering.
I believe they are. And I'm thinking their day must start at seven o'clock now instead of six because I've seen their vehicles there at four o'clock. So that tells me they must be working till five o'clock.
Oh.
But I don't know, I can't, uh, uh, I mean, I did drive around there tonight just to make that the roll off was still there before I opened my mouth and inserted my foot, but it is still there.
Julie, do you know what their time card cards are saying?
The time cards that I have for the, um, the, there would only have been a few days in April and I don't think they had started the ten hour by then.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments on the road?
Um, another comment came through from Frank that we can maybe take ownership of the dumpster by going through a lost or abandoned property process with the state police. Just in order to clear the air for us if it's someone else's property, that's an option too. And I told Frank that I would look into that a little bit more as well and I'll let Keith know that that could be an option when I send him an email with some of these concerns from the board.
Okay. He just, Keith just texted me, said he is not sure how to get in.
Okay. I have another question for Keith and I haven't been getting out much, but if it's been done, great, but has the, um, has the coal patch been put in over by loop keys or what's the status there? Or is it still just gravel?
Bob, do you know?
It was just gravel today, I believe.
Is there a reason that that couldn't be fixed with some coal patch now?
I can add that to the email to Frank, I mean, sorry, not to Frank, to Keith if you'd like. Get it together, Mike.
I know. I guess he didn't want that one to make the noise outside, apparently. So.
Okay.
Oh, he's he's all good now.
So I have.
So you'll add that to Keith's list about.
I'll send that email following tonight's meeting and copy you guys on it to make sure that I've gotten everything.
Okay, excellent. And I did talk to Keith about doing the work at the at the dump, the landfill, the the little jobs that needed there, those those test pipes. And he thought it was something that they could certainly handle this break, so we'll we'll keep track of that. And I guess, I guess since we're on it, I can, the last email we got from Buzz, uh, I believe Meredith, it energized her to get the deed all straightened away and I believe that that's all correct now and has been, she sent copies of the new deed to Deb to be filed. So the only thing that I believe we're waiting on is the is getting the the gate installed and then burying the the wells. And then there's a little bit, the dirt pipes had burned up that they wanted to just throw a little grass seed over. And then then that will be complete, so. I haven't heard anything from Buzz in the last week or so, but we're we're headed in a good direction for that. Is there anything else that anybody wants to add for Keith, while we're on the road crew?
Um, one more thing unless I can't remember if Chuck mentioned it or not, but with things the way they are now, I think it'd be a good, it would be good if he got back to giving us a report as to what they have done and what their intentions and what they intend to do.
Exactly. It's not only ours, our our townwide taxes, the state funding could be could have issues too. I suspect that they're not getting their money either, so.
Yeah, well, that, this probably isn't the time for him, but that brings up a question that I've had for a little while now and that is, is the state at some point maybe going to consider letting us go back and not just us, the whole state do like a second, an austerity budget just in case, you know, things get really bad?
I haven't seen that reported anywhere, but I think that's a good question for Rob and our state senators to advise us on, uh, or the league of cities and towns. So I I agree with you. From two thousand seven eight, you know, they cut us all by half to the highway and that could easily happen if not and more.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm with you, John. I'm really, I'm getting a little. And that includes the schools. But it's, this could be really nasty financially.
Yep.
Absolutely. Keep close track for that and see if we could get any, if that's the direction that we need to go. Is there anything else under under highway that we wanna discuss?
I'm in here now, Mike.
Oh, okay, you got in Keith?
I got in, it kept telling me that I couldn't get in cuz it was the was not a valid address or something, but Julie sent me some stuff that got me in, so I'm here now.
Okay, excellent. So Chuck, it items that we wanted to discuss, that garbage container. And I I will make a point of getting a hold of Clarence this week. You said you didn't know where it came from?
Uh, it came from. Yeah, it originally came from Ace Carding.
Their name's not on it.
No, there's no name on it and they don't lay any claim to it. That's why they didn't come back, they had no idea where it was or the contacted them to pick it up. And that's why, one reason it's still sitting there. And then other people are hesitant to hook onto it, being that it belongs to somebody else, but, um, there's no name on it.
Okay.
And Ace Carding or. If he'll if he'll hook onto it and haul it away and dump it, then that's, uh, that's good cuz we'll put it somewhere where when he returns it, it won't be such an attractive nuisance.
Is there, is there a place where we can, we can empty, that we can keep it secure so that people aren't throwing stuff in it?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Put it up in the gravel pit as long as that gate is chained.
Right, yeah, you're gonna have to put it somewhere where it's not easily accessible, that's all and, uh, or people notice it, so. Mean it.
I just assumed we didn't have it at all.
Well.
If we need in the future, we'll rat one.
Well, yeah, if you go ahead and fill it again, you're just gonna have trouble getting it dumped.
Right, so I just assumed, we had this conversation a little earlier before you got on, that, uh, if we can get somebody to empty the thing, we don't want it back.
Haul it away and don't bring it back is is, I think, our best option. So the TVs.
TVs, there's a place in Rutland on, uh, Gil.
Gleason, Gleason Road that you can get rid of that stuff. What's up to the recycle center there?
Which is Casella's, right?
In the back of the Dodge and one driver take them up, dump them off.
Cuz that's.
Probably gotta call ahead to make sure you can get rid of.
Cuz I've taken, uh, the town hall had a whole mess of fluorescent light bulbs that I took up there here a year or two ago and got rid of for us.
That's Casella's, right?
I believe Casella's runs it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Keith, there was also, Frank had also made the suggestion, this is Kristen, um, that you can all, if if for whatever reason, um, that he's worked with the state police before and the process of the lost or abandoned property is something that you can do and it only takes a few weeks for anybody to come and get their property, otherwise it is the towns and the states responsibility seemingly to back up that action. So another option, Keith, is there's this lost and abandonment option through the state police, which is something that could be looked into.
I kinda like that option because we, it might be handy to have it in the future.
Now, we just have to have a means of somebody that will deal with it once it's used, that's all, which is what we're lacking right now. Yeah, if Mike has some success with with Richie, then that's certainly a viable option, but, uh, otherwise we're just, uh, you know, prolonging the agony here if we get it full again and gotta find somebody to do something with it, so.
But if we if we went through claims court or whatever and it was ours, then that would, they would probably.
That would, that might make a difference, correct, yes.
But I I don't know.
And I just wanted to, we've had a couple of new additions to the meeting, I just wanted to, um, remind everybody that these meetings are all recorded, um, just for compliance with the open law. Just wanted to add that in.
Okay, Keith, what about the the sign, right of way sign for James Glick?
Yeah, I actually talked with James yesterday, we may even get that up tomorrow, so.
Okay.
He's got his sign all made, so he's ready for a post, so.
Okay. That's good. And also, we've kinda got away from you giving us a little tentative schedule for the the upcoming two weeks and we we feel that that's very important for us, so if you could give us a a idea on what you plan on doing over the next few weeks, that would be beneficial for all.
Okay, I'll send something to Kristen and she can get it to you guys.
Excellent.
I mean, it's weather dependent, but it'll be.
That's why we call it tentative.
Yeah.
So.
So, and you know, I don't, I don't know how far to plan ahead really right now. You know, I don't know. You know, we've got some plans for the summer when that season gets here. No word on the grant on the Herick Road, I assume, right, Kristen?
I've not gotten anything yet. No, Keith.
And I, I think all of that is currently on hold. So, uh, all I've got is notification that we shouldn't be working on any grant funded projects because they're not considered, uh, critical. So we're not supposed to be doing any of that any, but they haven't extended the date beyond June 30th for the ones that were potentially could be working on anyway. So, um, so that, that's all up in the air at this point anyway. So, but I don't, I mean, I think we're gonna have to go month by month anyway here and decide whether we're gonna have the money and the resources to go forward with some of the plans we have this summer anyways. So.
That's, that's what we expect. We were talking about that a little bit before you were able to sign in. And, and John had also said about how that the, the tentatively the state funding could get caught and stuff like that. So we don't want to extend ourselves without being pretty confident that the money will be coming in.
That's exactly right. So we need to be on firmer ground before we went forward with some of that stuff anyway. So.
Absolutely. And the landfill project, you, I sent you that email and that doesn't seem to be a big deal. We gotta put a gate up there and a little bit of, little bit of seed down and then just fill those, those, uh, test holes.
Yeah, I went up and looked at it after I got your email there. And yeah, it's pretty simple. Those, uh, the metal pipes, we've actually slid up a couple of times anyway. I think they'll pull right out with the back and they'll be gone. And then, uh, the PVC beside them, they're supposed to be, they said fill them with concrete. Um, you know, I may cap them with concrete, but fill them with something underneath it just so that it doesn't take so much concrete. We can probably, you know, hand to mix enough to cap those pipes if we don't have to fill them 20 feet down in. So.
Right.
So we could put crushed stone or something down in them and then just cap the top two feet or something. And, and then they get buried below grade anyway.
Right. Okay.
So their goal, their goal is to not have a sinkhole there is what, you know? So that way it would, that would work because we can cut them off and fill them close to the top and then just cap them with concrete and then bury them over and they'll be covered. So.
Okay. So that's a, that's a project that we could probably do without costing us much money too.
Oh yeah, absolutely. That's pretty straightforward there.
Right. And all the rest of, all the rest of, uh, the deed is all been squared away. So that's all, that's all set. So basically all we have to do is.
Happen. So that's, the sooner that can happen, then if you can get the ball rolling, then is what you're saying.
And that'll be nice to free up that money.
Well, yeah.
Just in case.
We may need it. Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions for Keith?
What about the coal patch on Rookdus?
Uh, well, we can coal patch it, but I think it'd be better to hot mix over it, Chuck. We're still a little ways away from being able to get hot mix because the plants are not open now. I'd like to put a shim over it with a grader of hot mix and not coal patch, and then it'll be more long-term.
Oh, okay.
Cause we'll start back at, uh, PQ's house and put that whole rut with a grader shim right out around there and carry it, you know, it'll start 50 feet away and go each way from it. And that's part of the reason you can't get a decent crossing in there is because the road's so far out of shape, you can't match anything to it. And if we put a, we can put a coal patch thing in there, but it's just gonna be, it's gonna pound right out just from the heavy traffic through it. So.
When do you?
As quick as we can get hot mix, Mike.
Okay. When do you expect them normally open?
Well, it's probably, we might be the first to May before anybody's open. Usually the first one is wilk and Rutland. They get started ahead of Pike and the bigger ones. But, uh, usually it's towards the first of May before you can get any of that because they won't start, start running the heaters until it's economical to do so. And right now, once they start them, they have to keep them warm. So they won't start them until we get the right kind of weather to make it work.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
If we're not gonna, uh, cover it, keep it full of gravel.
Yeah, I think it's not bad right now. I haven't been over it this week, I guess, but we, uh, we've capped it a couple of times here recently. And, you know, the coal patch, we put in the potholes over there too. They didn't, they're, it's all pounded out and gone. So, you know, we can, we've got some of that to do, but I don't, I, I think on that crossing, it's better to put something more substantial there. It's just, it's not gonna last anyways. I mean, my intent was to do last fall and then we didn't have a grader. And then when we got the grader, we, they shut the plants down and we didn't have, weren't able to get any material. But it's, uh, so, but that's my plan. And as quick as we can get some, we'll, we'll be over there doing it. And we gotta move the guardrail back at where we extended the culvert down at the round culvert by spruce gum. And, and then we could grader shim over that with some hot mix too. And it would take the sump out of that thing. So.
Okay, those are all, that's all good work to do with, without much cost, huh?
Well, yeah, it's gonna cost you a load of blacktop, you know?
Right.
Maybe, maybe 20 ton of blacktop or something, but.
Yeah. So that's a couple of grand and we should be in pretty good shape for that then, huh?
Right, right. Yeah, I don't know what it is. It's gonna be 70 bucks a ton or something probably.
Yeah, all that, uh, I think it went down a little bit, but.
Yeah, well.
It doesn't matter.
We buy, right. We, that's, I think that's a fairly reasonable figure.
Yeah, that should be. That'd be good. Any other questions for Keith?
As far as, uh, material from Galusha, we're kinda limited on that right now too. So, um, we can, we're, they're only supposed to sell it to us if it's for a critical project.
Oh, okay.
So depending on what we're doing, whether they are supposed to sell it to us. And they're nervous about people in and out of the scale house a little bit, I guess. I guess there's no, the scale house isn't manned now. It's done remotely.
That's correct. Yeah.
You drive in and have to pick up the phone and talk to her. So everybody that's through the scale house is picking up the same phone through the course of the day. So I don't know. I guess it's available to us if needed, but they're, they're, and they're opening.
Sound very safe.
Well, that's kinda why they're, I think they, they wanna limit it. They're leaving it up to you by the sounds of things. So, um, and I don't know that we're gonna have need for a lot of that at this point anyway. And I don't believe there's any money in our current budget to even think about it anyway on any big scale. So so it's, Barry is back. I assumed you guys knew that.
That's good.
Yeah. So he's back and, and like I say, unless they shut us down, we'll continue to, continue to work. But it's, uh, we're still taking precautions and staying separate as we can, you know? It's, I don't think anybody's uncomfortable anyway. So.
Okay.
Well, the three of you aren't all in that little bitty office at the same time, I hope.
No, and we're not spending any extended time in a vehicle together. And whatever's running the vehicle is the one that stays in that and.
I see you had three, three separate vehicles today when you're doing grading. That's a good thing.
Yeah. So, and that's what we're trying to do. And as long as we can do that, I think we'll continue. So.
Yep. Well, just be safe. That's all I ask.
Well, yeah, and I think we are. If I, if I had any reservations, I would voice them. But I, I think we're, you know, it probably depends more on what we're doing after work than it does while we're there, you know? And, and everybody seems to be staying home and limiting contact with anything else. So, um, and I don't know, I've had several calls. The towns are all over the place about what they're doing. I know Poltony was off for a while because they had somebody get exposed to it. So they shut the shop down, but I believe they're back at it now. So.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Keith? Okay, let's move on. Assessor's report?
Nothing from the assessor's office. Um, and I do have a report from Deb that states that as well.
Okay. Can, can you read Deb's report, please?
Sure. So to the Polit Select Board from Deb Hawkins regarding comments and concerns for the select board meeting on April 7th, 2020. From the assessor's office, nothing this week. For Bob Jones, three fleet permits which need signature on the table at the town hall with the warrants can be mailed if necessary. And this is all from Deb. So I think forwarded, I think I forwarded all of you Bob Morleano's monthly reports, but I will leave copies for Bob at the town hall. Still not allowing anyone in the town hall and we all are scat, scattering our days and hours to keep the number of staff in the building at one time to a minimum. So far it seems to be working. I have had communication with Bob Morleano with regard to concerned citizens noticing folks not practicing social distancing guidelines as set forth by Governor Scott. Really not much we can do about it other than advise them to do their part to stay safe and to part in the stay safe, stay home order. I am mostly coming in on Tuesdays and Thursdays and checking email from home on the off days. Yesterday I was on the phone a considerable amount of time with citizens and with Bob Morleano. Have a wonderful evening. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy, respectively submitted, respectfully submitted, Deb.
Okay. Excellent. So we'll move on to your report. Julie?
Okay. Hello. Um, do you want me to read your report or do you? No, I have it.
Okay, great.
Um, so first thing, first I would like to point out that the state has extended the deadline for filing taxes. The federal government has as well, um, from April 15th to July 15th. So the homestead declaration is included in that. So people do not need to file for their homestead declaration until July 15th. Um, then there are three warrants to be signed. There's 42 checks, 30 accounts payable and 12 payroll. Included in the accounts payable are the checks to compensate election workers. The payroll for the week was $8,583.01. The accounts payable was $21,812.04. The total money's from the general fund, $13,458.81. Highway, $15,750.73. And the wastewater, $1,185.51. Um, and the next thing that we need to maybe chat about is that I've heard some municipalities have been waiving penalties and interest on taxes that are due in this timeframe for a limited amount of time. Um, there is a process. I think it has to go through the board of abatement and just be a blanket motion. If we were to do that, the only thing that we would consider would be the final sewer payment, which is due on May 10th. So I was looking for thoughts on that. And then I can continue on or I can continue on and we can come back to that.
I think I just soon wait on point. Yeah. Any input on it?
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then lastly, I had that in an effort to minimize people coming into the town hall during the stay at home orders, we might consider filling out paperwork to eliminate the need for select board signatures on town checks. I've been looking into this and have some information tonight and I'll continue to look into it as well.
Do you wanna go ahead and share that information right now or?
Um, well, what I do have, I got from a handbook put out by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Um, that's specifically designed for municipal treasurers and the, um, one paragraph that I pulled is regarding who may sign checks in the treasure, if the treasurer's office is vacant. And it says, there is no clear authority for the select board to sign checks for the town if the office of treasurer is vacant. So my interpretation of that and just information that I've received from trainings that I've been to is that there really is no clear authority for select board to ever sign checks. It's just not something that is regularly done in order to maintain a proper separation of duties. It usually is that the select board issues orders for the treasurer to pay on, which is the warrants. So you approve and sign those. I then make the payments. And then my check is that an auditor can look at the books and make sure that the warrants and the checks match.
Okay. So it takes one step out that in an event like this would, would be a great savings of time. And we'd still have to approve the warrant. So we'd still check everything over that you made the checks out for. And, but we just wouldn't have to physically sign the checks.
Right. I mean, really, we should have, be having orders made for what I'm supposed to sign, you know, make checks for, and then I make the checks. I should know ahead of time what you're approving and I should only write the checks that you're approving.
So in instance like this, we could sign, we could, if we approved all the, all the orders on Tuesday night, you could make the checks out, sign them and send them out on Wednesday.
Correct.
So you wouldn't be having the checks made out in advance of the orders being signed.
Right.
Anybody got any input on that?
I voiced my opinion earlier. I'll still stick with my opinion that the checks need two signatures.
That you have somebody on the select board?
And I'll make a motion to that effect and uh, someone wanted to second it or not.
Could we wait and get a little bit more information before we make a motion or?
We have, I've been on this select board for a number of years. And before I came on, I know that we've always had two signatures on the checks. Um, and I am not happy that that was even brought up by Julie. You know, I mean, Bob was there, uh, at the town hall at our last meeting. I mean, just, uh, I'm pretty sure that a $5 million school budget has two signatures on their checks.
They do not.
By God, we better, we better have two signatures on ours. I'm looking for a second on my motion.
Well, I think before, I, I, my only comment also would be that two signatures is for her protection. I guess I'm old school, but anyhow. Um, and as far as warrants, yes, I see no reason why they couldn't be scanned and emailed or whatever. So we could look them over. Um, and as far as warrants, yes, I see no reason why they couldn't be scanned and emailed or whatever, so we could look them over, but you know, I, that's just another comment. But uh, I would like to see, I would second his motion, but maybe you want to wait and get more info.
Not necessary.
I'm not sure what the motion is. I mean, the motion is to continue the way things are.
Keep two signatures on the checks.
I think that's how it already is, though, correct?
It is, to continue.
That's right, but she's trying to get just her signature on the check.
I'm not asking, I'm not suggesting that I be the only authorized signer. But I can tell you that from trainings, several trainings that I have been to, put on by both the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. As well as the Vermont Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association, that the situation that we have is not the norm. And I would be glad to reach out to someone from any of those organizations and get their input on this.
Well, I think we have all read enough. Um, articles in the last couple of years about problems that other towns have had with. Um, treasurers and financial problems. Personally, I don't think that this, I believe is for your protection as much as anyone's, anyone else's. But that's just, you know. That's just my thought.
Yeah, and I think that was the reason that Judy wanted it to be that way was um from that standpoint, and I don't have. A problem with it being that way, but I do know. That if you actually look into what your role is and supposed to be, you are supposed to look at invoices and tell me what checks to to write, and then I'm supposed to write. I'm not supposed to go through the invoices myself and put together warrants that you then approve and sign checks at the same time. You're supposed to look at them. And you are supposed to approve them to be paid, then they are to be paid. Then an auditor is to combine, this is just what I have from my trainings. I don't need to fight about it because I really don't care. If someone wants to come in and sign checks, that's fine. I do have a little bit of a problem with people having a problem with me pointing out the way my job is supposed to go when I have had trainings. That is where I'm coming from.
Well, I don't think anyone's, I certainly, I could mention to fight with you about this. What I'm saying is, pretty much if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I'm just looking at the problems that other towns have had. And, you know, and we haven't, so if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
So then.
Something that. Oh, sorry.
Chris.
Oh, no, you go ahead. Mine was about something a little.
Chuck has made a motion and and had a second that motion, so we should have a vote on it right now. Is there any more discussion about the motion?
I think we could wait on it for a while and uh think about it. And. See how things are gonna settle out as the weeks go by. Um. Right now, we're putting people at risk that go in to sign unless we can have some sign. Safe procedure. Uh. I'd like to think about it a little bit more myself.
Okay, however, we do have a motion on the floor, so we have to vote on it. So.
Or he could withdraw, or couldn't he withdraw to a later meeting, yes?
Yeah, they could withdraw the motion and second. If if you so desire, where we could gather more information and see how this this all works out.
Because I would, I will, I will withdraw my second for further information.
Is there an opportunity for, I do have a couple of comments from Frank when there's opportunity for comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, just stating from Frank that all payroll is money owed by the town to employees should not need line item approval. Other vendors are different than employees that you need to pay anyway. Dual signatures is a wise idea. Followed up by follow a process and do not change it. Julie is correct, and Polit should follow recommended processes. Those are comments submitted from Frank.
Okay. So now we have a motion with no second on the floor. Does anybody want to second that motion? Okay, then, since we didn't get a second, we'll have to. We'll have to postpone on the vote of that motion until there's a second, so if we could gather more information. And uh, we can review this a little bit deeper before before we decide. And uh, we'll bring it back up at at the next meeting.
Um, something that should be done tonight is to, last meeting, there was a motion made to appoint Bob Jones as primary and Ed Cleveland as an alternate to approve and sign orders. For payroll and operating expenses warrants on behalf of the select board for the duration of Vermont's state of emergency due to the COVID nineteen crisis. Following updates over the last couple of weeks, it's been recommended that we reinstate that motion this evening, just to be sure that. In this, just to be sure that it is. Established and. You know, everybody's on the same page. So would anybody like to re?
Who who made the original one?
John made the original motion and Chuck seconded it. Would anybody like to move and second that for this evening?
I'll move it again.
Do you want to second it again, Chuck?
Nope. I'm quiet.
It was the same thing you seconded last time. About to allow Bob to sign the checks to be the second signature on the checks, and Ed.
Ed, do you want to? Ed or Bob, do you guys, either one of you could second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So carried? Is there anything more under the treasurer's report?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And next. Emergency management?
So I do have that. Hang on one sec. Okay, from the Polit Emergency Management Director, monthly report for March twenty twenty. Uh, or April, or from March twenty twenty-four, April, excuse me. COVID nineteen updates have been posted to the Facebook website and website every day since March twelfth. They've also been, I, this is not in his report, but I do know they've also been sent out via e-blast. He participated in three conference calls. Uh, since the week of March eighth with the Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities, completed continuity of operations plan for the town of Polit. So that's all in the Emergency Management Director's report.
Okay, and did option of that, those plans he he would like us to do it next?
On the twenty-first, I believe.
The twenty-first, okay. Did everybody get those? Those plans? From Bob, uh, when was it, Monday, yesterday, or was it last week? I don't remember what day.
It was, it was prior to yesterday. I don't have the exact date, but.
Must have been like Thursday or something, I think.
The days are all blending these, these days, but everybody should have gotten it via email.
Okay.
If anybody had troubles getting it, please let Bob or myself know, and we can make sure to get it to you, but make sure, please, to review it before the next meeting.
Okay. So then after that, we have.
Uh, wastewater uh, um, health officer.
Okay, health officers report.
Um, I have that as well. Completed one dog bite report for March twenty twenty.
Okay. That's it.
That is all.
Okay, wastewater, um, Jenny is not coming down tomorrow because of the obvious reasons. But she has all the documents, the site plans, et cetera, and Jill's gonna give her some videos. And she's gonna start working on the project with the information that she has. And other than that, I haven't had any. Any problems that. And there's a, I think she's working on one other, one other report to do for the state. But other than that, it's pretty well set up. So was there any old business?
The only item that I, this is Kristen, the only item um for older unfinished business was, we had discussed last meeting whether or not it was necessary for. The board to re-adopt the purchasing policy and or the conflict of interest and ethics policy that was. Adopt, that one was adopted in twenty eighteen or nineteen, I believe. Um, I looked in our, the Select Board Handbook. I also looked on the VLCT. Resource pages, and it does not appear that it's necessary to re-adopt those annually, but. The policies that were adopted stand as they are. Those ones are what are being followed, so. Um, that being said, if at any point in time, there's any reason that anybody would like to propose amendments, I believe that's. An option, um, but at this point, it does not appear it needs to be re-adopted every year.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for researching that, Kristen. I appreciate that.
My pleasure, and I had found um that I did not have the purchasing policy on the new computer, so John kindly sent it to me, and I'm going to try to scan it in. That way, we all have it electronically, so. If anybody would like an electronic copy, I'd be happy to email it along once I figure out how to get it into the computer.
Good. And that's it for old business?
That's all that I had.
All right, what about new business?
I wonder whether uh, the public is aware of the no.
The no what?
No outside burning. Brush and whatever to not put any burden on our. Firemen or emergency management. Um. I just think it should be publicized as much as we can.
Is there an official announcement anywhere about that, that maybe we could? Deb's been doing such a great job of emailing.
I don't know where that came from. But I think the fire department or the uh, the state.
Lars Lund, Lars Lund would be the. Would be the contact guy. He's in the Polit Fire Department, so he. He's, he's our official force of parts.
I can um, contact the fire department and see if there's something in writing that we can. Get to maybe publicize.
Thank you.
Be great. I wasn't aware of that, but it makes sense.
Hi, hello, this is Julie.
Hi.
Yes. The Agency of Natural Resources put out um a warning to reduce the risk of wildland fires during COVID nineteen. Emergency open burning is not advised.
A and R did that, Julie?
Yes, on April third.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, is there anything else under new business? Okay, let's have any public comment?
I had one thing, Mike. Um, I did hear an update from. Uh, Chief Weiss of the Fire Department that he had a call with the state, and it does appear that Vermont is doing a really great job with our. Uh, pandemic response protocols and that by everybody's attempts to shelter in place and. Avoid public buildings and gatherings, et cetera, Vermont is on a good path to be able to handle this in a better case scenario than several other states, so. That was just a little bit of good news that I thought might be nice to share with everybody.
It is, it's good positive news.
I do just want to wait. I know that, I think Frank was having some issues with his camera, so I, or with his speaker, so I just want to make sure he's been submitting his. Comments here to make sure they get through. Just want to make sure he doesn't have.
I've been seeing his comments on the bottom of the.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No comment from Frank. Um. Except, oh, he, his one comment was, the check signing process should be spelled out in the handbook, et cetera, and accounts payables report. Is all the board needs to review invoices prior to checks being drafted for two signatures. Thank you, Frank.
Okay, so Chuck made a motion to adjourn. Does anybody have anything else they want to bring up while we're still in the meeting?
If not, I will second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.